I've also served on the search committee for the management position of the Fritschoff Valley Country Club, where we found the current... okay, I'll skip down here. When running for city council, one of the first questions you are asked is, "Why are you running?" The reason I'm running for city council is in 2005, when I went self-employed, I got involved in my community for my business, and you meet lots of people, including politicians and local figureheads. It was at this point that I started being asked when I'm planning to run for something. This planted the seed. Next was going to be timing. When the special election came up last month, the timing felt right. I hope to bring new ideas to the city, and I'm from a different generation than most on city council and have a different background than most on city council. I ensure LaGrange's future while maintaining small... is Tomo? Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Mark, so I'm pretty sure that everyone in this room has probably heard about me because I'm the young, rich thing from California that's taken LaGrange by storm. I appreciate all your support and I thank everyone for being here this evening. Originally, I was born in California, but I was raised in Texas. I moved here in 1997 and I went to LaGrange High School. I left here in 10th grade and went to Georgia where I graduated from high school and got my associate's degree in business law. I was homesick. I miss LaGrange. I wanted to come back home, and this is where my family is from, four generations. I wanted to come back home and make a change in my community. I got involved first working with Habitat Humanity. First, I received a home from them, and then by my volunteering and working with them, I wanted to do more for my community. In doing that and also my disaster recovery works, I met all kinds of people. All kinds of people were coming to me, asking me, you know, "How can we do this? How can we do that?" And I wanted to have an answer for them, and I said, "I don't know, but I'll figure it out. Some way I'll find out how we can get this job done." And I'm here. I said, "If I want to be the change that I want to see, I've got to make the first step." So I said, "I'm gonna run for mayor," and I ask for you all's support walking me through this step, and I appreciate everyone for being here this evening. And I'm gonna hand the mic over.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marilyn Decore, and I'm running for city council in Ward 4. I was born down the road in Columbus, but then moved to Galveston with my family, and that's where I was raised. My husband and I, Luke and I, moved back to LaGrange in 2009. We moved from Houston, where I owned a successful bakery and cafe, and doing that taught me the skills of both organization and teamwork, leadership, budgeting, skills that I think will help me serve you on the city council. I began attending city council meetings in 2017 because there was an issue that I was really interested in. And then I began to continue to go to city council meetings, and I listened closely. I wanted to know the issues that were before our sitting. And there came a point where some things happened, and I decided, you know, "I'm gonna run." And it wasn't an easy decision at all, but I thank everybody who supported me and helped me make the decision. I think LaGrange is a strong town, and with the right stewardship, we can continue to build on and expand our city space. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Yoncha. I'm seeking reelection for LaGrange City Council, Ward 4. I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit about myself. I was lucky enough to be born and raised in this county. My wife and I are married. We raised three beautiful daughters here. They all attended LaGrange High, Sacred Heart Catholic School here. I'd also been blessed to have my own insurance business here for 26-plus years. Back six years ago, this is how I got into the city council. There was a gentleman that was retiring. He was forced to retire because of his wife's health. And LaGrange City Council was looking for someone to sponsor them in Ward 4. The only thing that I really had thought about so far, as far as city council was, or being a politician or any of that, is my lights were working, my electricity was on, and my sewer was working. That's the only thing that really concerned me about the city of LaGrange. And after I got to thinking about it, I had to reach real far back and start thinking on how good this town has been to me as far as a business of 20... you know, I was in business 20 years at that point in time. And had to make the decision, "Well, you know what? I think it's time to start giving back." And so I said, "Yes." And when I got into the city council, I did realize how much it took to run this city government. I take this seat on the city council very seriously. I always use a common sense approach and try to do the next right thing on any of my voting decisions for the betterment of this city. Thank you very much.
My name's Kim Taylor, and I'm not having anybody run against me, which is fine. I would like to have somebody. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. Some of y'all know me from LCRA. I worked out at the Fair Power Project for 33 years. I am a journeyman electrician by trade, but I spent most of my time in management. I started out in Austin, Texas. I was a farmer, professional farmer for the city of Austin and also worked in air power plants. The reason we came to LaGrange, I'm from Flattonia. We came to LaGrange because we didn't want to raise our kids in Austin, Texas, because I was raised in Flattonia. My wife, Bibby, was raised in sister. And we weren't raising our kids in Austin. So the Fair Power Project was getting built. I got lucky enough to get hired. I ended up being a manager over all the power plants that LCRA owns when I retired in 2011. And since then, I've done nothing but volunteer work. I helped the school with the building of the stadium. I'm presently helping Sacred Heart Church on the addition of the church building. And I drive cancer patients, and I'm part of the American Cancer Society. And by the way, if any of y'all are interested in that, come see me after this is over. I need some more drivers. Again, I'm unopposed. I've been on the city council one term. And if I'm elected or not elected, this will be my last time. I believe it's time for people, new ideas, new faces, and I don't believe you should be on anything more than a couple of terms. So this will be my last shot, and I will bring up as many things as I possibly can to make the city better, and that's my goal. Because I love LaGrange, and I want it to be the best it possibly can. Thank you.
That concludes the opening statement portion. So if you'll hand that microphone back to Ms. Dockry, we'll begin with the questions. And again, the questions, the answer is... what did we say, Doc? Two minutes for the answers? What did we say, Sarah? I've got it written down here. Two minutes to answer, yes. And then 30 seconds if anybody at all up front wants to chime in. Our question is, "What is your opinion of balancing growth and historic values in LaGrange?" What is your opinion of balancing growth and historic values in LaGrange?
My opinion on balancing growth and historic value? I am personally a historian, so I love the history that this town offers. So in essence, I love that we have the state park here. We have lots of visitors that come into our state park, which is a great area. I know that personally, we use that service, and I hear a lot of people commenting about it. The other values? I feel like our city needs... we need more things for different age groups. I know the rec center has a lot of things that they offer to various age groups. We listened to Ms. Rangel last night, and I knew of a lot of those things that were available. And I'm very happy about the splash pad that we have in town because my focus is all my babies from school, and so they will have things to do. I wish and hope one day that we will have a little more entertainment for my age group, the younger grandparents, that we have a night out where I really, really miss our movie theater. I know Bastrop and Brenham are close, but sometimes when you work, you don't want to drive 30, 40, 5 minutes to a movie. You want to go five minutes downtown like we did 30 years ago before we lost our movie theater. So something to that effect. And of course, we want to keep our city within budgets. We don't want to exceed our budgets. We want to make sure we're in safe boundaries. So I think that's pretty much all I have to address on that.
Okay. Anyone want to comment on that answer? If not, we'll go to the next question.
I don't mind commenting if you'll repeat the question, please.
The question, "What is your opinion of balancing growth and historic values in LaGrange?"
Well, our downtown historic district, our downtown area, is absolutely beautiful. It's one of the things that drew us here, to live here. And I don't want to see that downtown area change. But with that said, there's other areas where there definitely needs to be growth. There needs to be advancement. We're gonna get left behind as a city if we do not move forward. And that needs to be done very carefully and with discretion so that it does not happen too quickly. Thank you.
All right, the next question will go to Mr. Littrell. The question is, "Can you comment on development in LaGrange other than the downtown area?" Can you comment on development in LaGrange other than the downtown area?
Yes. One of the things that I'd like to see, well, several things, but the first one is some better nightlife, period, in the downtown area. There is none. So I would like to see that money stay here. Because I can tell you how many times I've gone to Smithville or Bastrop to eat dinner at night because there wasn't anywhere to eat in our downtown area. So that's one thing that I'd like to see. Another thing is maybe a sports facility of some kind that is regional games between... We're right smack dab in the middle between San Antonio, Austin, and Houston, and not too far off I-10. We need to be capitalizing on those regional games when those two cities are playing. That's money that could be coming into our town here, hotels, and spending money, and helping tourism. So that's one thing that I'd really like to see. The third thing would be to, like Ms. Dockry said, "We need something for these kids. There's nothing here. There's nothing to keep them." I can't tell you how many times I've heard kids say that they can't wait to get out of here because they're bored. There's nothing to do, and we need something for them. If we don't do something soon, we're gonna lose that generation. We're gonna lose them to Austin and Houston and wherever else. They're gonna move. So those are three main things that weigh on my heart.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to comment? We'll go to the next question. If you'll pass the microphone, there we go. "How would you support local businesses and creation of jobs in LaGrange?" How would you support local businesses and creation of jobs in LaGrange?
I think first, first things first, for us to be able to support jobs in LaGrange, we need to keep a business from the environment. We need to keep the tax rates low. We have to create an environment that people want to flock to so that they'll want to come to this town. We need to have our citizens shop locally and support our small businesses. It's those taxes that keep our city beautiful and up and running. I think if we could get the city involved in a lot more programs, it would be a beautiful thing to offer that. Keep taxes low, create an environment where businesses want to flock to, and have them come. I think that's the best thing I can say about that. I think taxes is a big issue, and I think that if we can do that and support them, they'll want to come here.
Okay, before we go on to the next question, does anybody want to comment on that? You want to hand the microphone to Ms. Dockry?
On that note, with my experience from working in the education field, I meet a lot of parents, new firsts coming in, and a lot of times they'll have employer on their paperwork. And they'll so proudly put NA on there, well, being homegrown like I am. I spoke to a lot of business owners that'll tell me that I need employees, so word of mouth is like a big thing here. I know we're small and we use our local newspaper for a lot, but word of mouth gets around, and if you know of businesses that need help like that, that's one of the best sources we can offer.
Okay, anybody else want to comment before we move on to the next question? Okay, the next question is, "What is your personal vision for the future of LaGrange?" What is your personal vision for the future of LaGrange?
I would like to see, as I said, LaGrange is a strong town. I think it's attractive to residents and visitors alike. I would like to see more events brought to our beautiful downtown square, more amenities put in, and down the road... And I think that, yes, there is business development to be done, but that's something I don't really know a lot about, and I have to think about it. Of course, I envision also living here the rest of my life, and I want to enjoy it. And I love LaGrange.
Okay, is there anyone who wants to comment? Mr. Littrell, can you hand the microphone down to Mr. Littrell, please?
Having chosen to live here, where I could have chosen to live anywhere, that should speak a lot for what LaGrange is. This is a beautiful, beautiful place. We absolutely love it here. There's a small-town charm that I do not want to see change. So if I am elected into the city council, first and foremost, I do not want to change that. But there has to be growth. There has to be moving forward to the future. But as I stated before, it has to be done carefully and with discretion. And so what I plan to do is... I hope everyone's okay. What I plan to do is... thank you, sir. Is to help the city move forward but maintain that small-town charm because I don't want to see that change. That's what drew me here. The last thing I want to do is come in here and turn it into what I left, or Bastrop. I don't mean to badmouth Bastrop, but we aren't Bastrop, and I don't want to see us turned into that. So thank you.
Anybody else want to comment before we go on to the next question, which will go to Mr. Yoncha? "As a member of the council, how would you work with the city police department?"
As a member of the council, I fully back the city of LaGrange Police Department. I'm there for any questions or any time that David has any time to come to the council and has any questions or needing... It seemed like here just not long ago, we were looking at getting cameras for the officers to protect them and also to protect them if it went something caught, brought up in a court case. We just got some cameras for our policemen now. We've got new uniforms for our policemen now. This new chief that we've gotten is doing a great job, and I see nothing else that I can say about that.
Anyone else want to comment before we go on to the next question? All right, Mr. Taylor, the question is, "What do you think about senior affordable housing in LaGrange?" What do you think about senior affordable housing in LaGrange?
Housing in LaGrange has been a problem ever since I've been on the council. And then the flood came and made it even worse. And so the small steps we've been making with the Mennonites and different folks, Habitat for Humanity has helped, but that's not the answer. We need more homes for people who want to move here because people do want to move here. If you look around, our population in the school is not growing, but the population in the county is because elderly people like myself are retiring in the cities, and they don't want to live in the city. They want to come to our small town. And of course, we've got to guard that we don't change it into, like we said, some other towns. But the facts are, Houston's coming this way, and Austin's coming this way, and it's inevitable over time. But we can manage that with the right people building the proper homes. And I don't mean just low income or high income. I'm talking all incomes and elderly folks. You know, you look around, there's probably more elderly people in this county than there are young. That's the facts, so we need to focus on that.
All right, is anybody on the panel who wants to comment? If not, we will go to the next question. If you'll kindly move the microphone back toward Ms. Dockry. The question is, "What is your opinion of asking for an independent outside audit of the city of LaGrange accounts?" What is your opinion of asking for an independent outside audit for the city of LaGrange accounts?
My opinion is, I don't feel like we need to do that because the auditors that we have have done a good job. I mean, I've heard at one of the city council meetings, and they seem to agree that he did the job that needed to be done. I know that sometimes asking someone else to do it on the outside may reflect things that we may not necessarily want to see, but if you have someone doing the job and you feel like you trust those people, I don't see any point where you need to change at that point.
Is there anyone who wants to comment? I believe Mr. Taylor wants to comment. Would you get the microphone handed down here?
You bet. Not necessarily. We had a financial audit here recently, and we got it at the last meeting, meeting before last. But I myself am going to have a discussion at the next meeting about, not necessarily financial, but a business process improvement audit over the whole city. And I've got my discussion all laid out and ready to share my thoughts, but I would like to see someone come in and look at our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats. And that way, you can plan ahead if you know what they are. And so not doing audits doesn't get you there. You're only as good as the last audit that you had and responded to. So I am, to be honest, I hate audits, but when I was at FPP, I was audited, seemed like every month.
Okay, anybody else want to comment on the audit? If not, we'll go to the next question for Mr. Littrell.
I would need to say something.
Sure.
I agree with you. I think that there's nothing wrong with having a fresh pair of eyes on anything, especially when you have a city council where it's been the same people for years. In order to keep it transparent and to keep everyone satisfied, I don't see a problem with fresh eyes looking over the books. And when you have a transparent government, it shouldn't be a problem doing so. So I think it's a good thing.
All right, we'll go now to the question from Mr. Littrell. "Are the sidewalks in LaGrange adequate? And how important is that to you?" Are the sidewalks in LaGrange adequate, and how important is that to you?
What sidewalks? Well, our streets are pretty wide, and so we don't have hardly sidewalks anywhere throughout town other than in the downtown area. And sidewalks, to be honest with you, you take walking for granted. Somebody in a wheelchair may feel differently. And, you know, I can't think of anything in the sidewalks that I've come across that would be an issue, but somebody in a wheelchair may see that differently, and so that I don't know. But throughout the rest of the town, there really are no sidewalks, and it would be very, very expensive to add that now. And I don't know that that would be a cost that our citizens would be willing to take on. The streets are pretty wide, and I feel very safe walking down them. And so personally, I'm okay with that.
Okay, anybody want to comment on the sidewalks? It is. Mr. Yoncha, we'll give the microphone to Mr. Yoncha, please, all right?
I think here about three years ago, we went through a big ordeal with the sidewalks. And we had quite a few of them renovated and spent quite a bit of money on the sidewalks here in the city. I can remember one instance to where it was a big deal. "What color are we gonna paint this one step?" Because it's a step that you have to step up on. I think it was over by Brazer Motor Company. And it ended up having to be... we painted it all different kinds of colors, and people kept falling. And finally, I think we got it right. But overall, I think that the sidewalks here in town have been brought up to par, and they're in very good shape.
Okay, anyone else want to comment on the sidewalks? If not, we'll go to the next question for Ms. Barksdale. The question is, "Please comment on current signage issues in LaGrange and how you would work to resolve the problems." Please comment on current signage issues in LaGrange and how you would work to resolve the problems.
I believe this is a community effort. That's why I love LaGrange, a small-town district. Everyone gives their input. I think that we should go to the citizens and see what is their input, what do businesses think? Can we all get together and decide? Maybe we all need to sit down and come up with a new ordinance or something that's understandable for business owners so that we don't come into problems if they're out of code or anything like that. I think that we should be able to talk out more things than arguing or fighting or lawsuits. I think that we should get... everyone should get involved, the business owners and the community, and let's all decide. Because we want to make this a business-friendly place so we can attract new businesses. So let's all get together and decide what's the best thing for the community of LaGrange.
Okay.
I have been knocking on a lot of doors and asking people what their concerns were, what they wanted to see, and a lot of people brought up the sign issue. And a lot of people don't understand why someone can't put up a sign on their business because of an ordinance that almost doesn't make sense. I believe that a business... We're a beautiful, small town, and that's important. But I think that there are areas outside the historic district where an electric sign or whatever should be allowed.
All right, anyone else want to comment? Mr. Littrell?
I would like to see some changes to the sign ordinance. It's ridiculous. I think that we've got people in the city as well as citizens that can't see eye to eye, and right now, it just seems like... I'm trying to find a very delicate word to use here, but we're being babies about it. It's time to grow up. Let's look at the city and its future and make some real decisions and quit going back and forth with this sign ordinance. It's ridiculous, in my opinion, and it needs to change.
All right, any other comments about signage before we go to the next question? And I think I've lost my... I believe it's Ms. Decore's question, all right? Again, these questions came to Ms. Mayberry in advance. And the order these questions came to her is the order we're asking these questions.
Please ask me something a little more specific.
I'm gonna ask you what's in front of me. "What are your priorities for the budget for the city of LaGrange? Examples: the police, casino hall, Main Street." "What are your priorities for the budget of the city of LaGrange? Examples: police, casino hall, Main Street."
Well, I think that those are all priorities, and that's why we have a budget is to figure out how much goes where. And as Mr. Yoncha pointed out, we have done a lot for the police, which I think is important. Casino hall is a great thing, and the community theater that is there has been done very well and is a good thing. What was your last one?
Examples: police, casino hall, and Main Street.
Main Street. Main Street... Main Street, I think, is doing a pretty good job. I don't know enough about it to make a judgment call on.
Okay, anyone want to comment before we go on to the next question?
Yes, I do. When we get to talking about the city of LaGrange and how it's doing Main Street-wise or just overall, open your eyes when you're rolling through town on a Saturday morning, and you might get the traffic jam. You know, we're looking at, just on the historical district downtown, we have 90% occupancy. That's awesome. Start opening your eyes around when you go around and go to any other town. I'm not gonna name any other town, but start opening your eyes and start looking at how many dusty windows you're seeing in these other towns. We don't have that here.
Okay, any other comments before we go on to the next question? I think, Mr. Yoncha, that question's going to be for you. The question is, "How would you work to recruit and retain city..." and retain city employees for LaGrange? How would you work to recruit and retain city employees for LaGrange?
Okay, uh, on recruitment, it just depends on, on what they, what the job is going to, to be, first of all. And, and second of all, what I would do as far as a managerial position on, I would, I would have a sit-down meeting with my people every week or as seen or as needed. And, and take, take in what kind of fusses they have about what's going on within the city or the managerial. And, and I, I believe in this wholeheartedly to where if you've got something that you need to, that you, that's, that's bothering you, you need to get it out. You need to get it out. And there needs to be somebody there to listen to you. And, and if there's somebody there to listen to you, then, then it can be addressed and, and taken care of at that time.
All right, before we go to the next question, does anybody want to comment on that question? Ms. Barksdale?
I think how we recruit other employees, city employees, is to take care of the ones we have. When they see the fair treatment and merit raises and we're taking good care of them, they're going to want to work for the City of LaGrange. I think we've got to take care of them first. That's going to show everyone else this is a great town to work for and to come and join our winning team.
All right, anyone else want to comment before we go to our next question, which is for Mr. Taylor? Our question is, what are your priorities, if any, for reducing city expenditures? What are your priorities, if any, for reducing city expenditures?
I've got in front of me the list of expenses for the city. And, you know, I wouldn't reduce anything in the police department. And they do cost us the most, 1.2 million dollars a year. Parks come in second at $379,000 a year. I certainly wouldn't reduce the park budget. That's part of what makes LaGrange beautiful. Our library has been recognized as one of the best in, in the state and in the nation. And it comes in third. Main Street follows that, then recreation, and then the street and bridge. So, to be honest, you need to look at your expenses in all of the departments and determine if there's any excess or things that you're doing that don't need to be doing. And that takes me back to the audit issue that I brought up earlier. And in fact, some areas may need more money than they have already, and some may not need as much. And I know that's a delicate issue. But if it's managed properly, everybody understands and you get everybody on the team. And you have to do the best at what you got. Because it all comes from, from either taxes or other areas. And, you know, that, every dollar is important.
Okay, anybody want to comment on expenditures before we pass the microphone back to Ms. Doc, Ms. Decore?
Yes, I agree with you.
All right, the next question is for Ms. Docry. The question is, what is your favorite thing about living in LaGrange? And what would you do to preserve that? What is your favorite thing about living in LaGrange? And what would you do to preserve that?
My favorite thing about living in LaGrange is the history, all the historical things to do in town, our beautiful courthouse on the square that takes, you can take awesome pictures, the park, as I mentioned, Monument Hill State Park, the history in general that we have in LaGrange. There's a lot, a lot of history here. And people flock from everywhere to, to see the history that's been created here. I know like the citizens here, our community, it's, it's just beautiful. And everybody seems to get along with everybody. I know city council is a little bit different, but in essence, we show a lot of love in our city. And people that just moved in, like me working at HEB and at school, they'll just, I mean, I barely know them. And they'll come in and say how loving our city seems. And just knowing that is great to me. I, I just love that thought. I've enjoyed my whole life here. Raised my daughter here. My grandchildren love coming here when they're here from Houston. So just in general, our history in town.
Okay, anyone else want to comment about the favorite thing in LaGrange? Mr. Decore wants to comment.
Do you mind if I go?
No, not at all. Go ahead.
Well, I, I just, the people. Every, everybody here is absolutely amazing. We fell in love with everybody when we moved here. Some people were so open to an outsider coming in. And I really appreciated that. Being from Houston, I felt like y'all, y'all welcomed my family with open arms. And so that, that's the number one thing. Number two would just be how beautiful it is. You know, growing up, I looked at concrete buildings. And now we're looking at pastures and cows. And I love that. It's just amazing. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Decore, I think wants to comment before we move on to the next question.
Yes, I would like to bring up a couple of actual physical places that I love and I think are almost secret treasures that we have. One is the Quilt Museum, which is amazing. We've, it's an amazing place. It has wonderful exhibits. And then the Bugle Boy, which is really another hidden treasure it brings in. Well-known artists. It's a great listening room. You don't feel like you're going to a bar. Okay, so the Quilt Museum and the Bugle Boy are two of my favorite places.
All right, anyone else want to comment before we give the microphone back to Mr. Littrell for his question? All right, the question is, how would you support local schools? How would you support local schools?
One way that I'm supporting local schools now is with Rotary. We do quite a bit. And I would like to see that, that expand to other organizations besides Rotary. For city council position, supporting local schools would be just to vote and pass on things that, that help the teachers and help the, the schools grow. I guess when any time a grant or something like that comes through and we have, that's presented to us, we would evaluate that to make sure that it is a, a good decision. And I would support it any way that I can. My son goes to, to public school. He went to private school from pre-K3 all the way up to second grade. When we moved here, we put him in the public school district. We had always done private school when, in the Houston area. And when we were searching for hometowns that we wanted to move to, one of the first things we looked at was the school district. And LaGrange has a good school district. So we put them in the public school system. So as city council, as a citizen, I would do whatever I can to help support that school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to comment? Mr. Decore wants to comment on that. Ms. Docry, go ahead.
Of course, everybody knows that I've been at LaGrange ISD for 28 years. And I'm officially retiring in June. So definitely school. I've been trained by the best parents, students and teachers alike. And I think that LaGrange ISD has the best system there is. So city council, we will do what we need to do.
Okay, Mr. Decore wants to comment.
I think the way we can best support the schools is to attend school board meetings and support the school board. It was very hard for them to get the, the bond passed to get the schools upgraded. And I felt that that was really important. And I talked to a lot of people about it. But I really think that we can't ignore the fact that we have a school board and they are, you know, let's support them. Go to their meetings. I see.
Okay, anybody else want to comment? If not, we will go to Ms. Barksdale for the next question. The question is, what led you to run for this office and how would you work to accomplish your goals? What led you to run for this office and how would you work to accomplish your goals?
Uh, doing disaster recovery in Fayette County for Hurricane Harvey survivors is what led me on this mission. Being on the front lines of the disaster with the families and working with them to rebuild and repair their lives after losing everything is what made me want to get involved and start to ask questions, start going to city council meetings, start participating in anything I could get in. It was because of them and questions. I had people start asking me things that I couldn't, I couldn't quite answer. Well, who do we go to for this if I have an issue with this problem? Or, and I say, okay, we'll go to the DA, go to the police station, go here, go there. And they came back and they said, well, I didn't get any help. So what do I do now? And I said, you know what? I don't know. Let me try it. So I said, let me do something. I went and did what I told my families to do. And I tried it. And I went to the DA and I voiced these opinions for them. And I didn't get anywhere. And I, and I felt really bad. And then I think I met with Judge Weber and we talked about it. And he said, you know, the county and the city don't really work together. And to me, that saddened me because I think community, LaGrange is a beautiful place. We've all got to work together in order for us to continue with this great community and continue having people want to flock here and live here. And it's just the citizens at a whole. And then when I said that I was going to run, I had a lot of support. And I figured at first I was just going to run just to allow factor, just to draw attention to these issues. But then it gained so much support and I had so much warmth from the community. And that's the reason why I continue to go forward. That's the reason I'm here right today and am asking for your support to continue my journey in Fayette, LaGrange.
All right, anyone want to comment about what led you to run for office and how would you work to accomplish your goals, Mr. Littrell?
I'll take this opportunity to finish my opening statement. Well, one of my goals is to ensure LaGrange's future while maintaining small town charm by promoting growth responsibly and with discretion like I stated before. Additionally, I'd like to increase the transparency between the city council and the citizens. One of the ways I'm planning on doing that is by social media. If you follow my Facebook page, I posted the city council agenda last night. And I posted what the results of that was after the meeting. I plan on doing that each time. There must be communication between city council and its citizens. They are just not educated with, with the ongoings of, of what the city is voting on and discussing. Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to comment before we go to our next question, which is for Ms. Decore? The question is, can you speak to what is occurring with Fayette County Disaster Recovery Team's mission to help Harvey survivors? Can you speak to what is occurring with Fayette County Disaster Recovery Team's mission to help Harvey survivors?
The only thing I can speak to is the fact that they have turned in the documents that city council can approve. And they have been approved. We don't, the city council can't tell the helpers, we can only say, okay, the plaque is right. And we have to pass that. We can't tell them what to build. I think that the city council has limitations and people try to overrun them for reasons that I'm not sure of.
Mr. Littrell would like to comment on that. And then anyone else would like to comment?
To comment on what Mr. Decore just said, if, if city council is up there to vote on whether they followed the guidelines or not, you don't need me. That's, that's rubber stamping. And that's just checking a box. City council doesn't need to do that. City manager or city secretary could say, yeah, they checked all the boxes. If, if I'm there, I'm there to make decisions, inform decisions of what the end result's going to be. If, if something's not right with this neighborhood, then we need to speak up and say something. Just the fact that they checked all their boxes doesn't mean anything. That, you don't need me for city council for that. And so I, I don't like the fact that that even goes to vote for city council because city, city secretary or city manager can just rubber stamp that.
There, again, I say we need to have that listening ear out there and be able to voice those concerns and needs. And just make sure that the right choices are made.
Can you repeat that question for me? Can I make my? Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I have read the city charter extensively. I have talked to people about it. And perhaps you might want to look at it again to see the boundaries of what the mayor can do and what the council can do. The council listens to everybody who has complaints about whatever. But that doesn't mean that they can act on it. And I really think a reading of the city charter is called for. Oh, I, I wanted to repeat the question again.
Well, the question is, was, was to Ms. Decore. And the question is, can you speak to what is occurring with the Fayette County Disaster Recovery Team's mission to help Harvey survivors? All right, so the next question, unless anybody else wants to comment, we'll go to Mr. Yoncha. The question is, what style of city government do you feel is most effective? One where city council members engage in current issues and decisions? Or one of acceptance of city administrator decisions? What style of city government do you feel is most effective? One where city council members engage in current issues and decisions? Or one of acceptance of city administrators' decisions?
Very good question. Right now, we are set up on a council manager government. Because we do not have a full-time staff for our city council. We're not like Austin or Houston or San Antonio or any of these bigger cities. And so we rely on our city manager to go out and do a lot of the work and, and a lot of the, the labor and have staff present all of that to the city council of LaGrange. It has been working very well since I've been in the council for six years. And I, I don't see any changes that need to be made as of right now. We're only a town of 5,000. Not unless you want to start hiring someone full-time city council, which is going to bring up costs to the city.
All right, before we go on to the next question, does anyone want to comment on that? And we'll go to the next question, which is Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor, what is your opinion of LaGrange needing a new city hall or renovation of the existing city hall? What is your opinion of LaGrange needing a new city hall or renovating the existing structure?
Well, our structure is only 54 years old. It was dedicated in 1965. If you don't believe me, go look at the plaques on the side of the building. And while you're doing that, look up at the roof. Roof is in bad shape. We need and we're working towards renovating and adding to the city hall. And one of the questions that's normally answered, what happens if you were given a million dollars and came out of the sky and you want to do something with it? One of the things I would do, streets, water, mains, and work on city hall. It really does need a retrofit. Probably the air conditions are probably from 65, too. And their EER rating is probably next to nothing. So you could put in some new air conditions, some new lighting, and actually could probably save a little money. And if you've ever been inside the building, everybody's on top of one another. And they need a better place to work. You need a better place to come to city council meetings. Our microphones are very hard to work. You came here. And I can go on and on. Go to restaurants. I mean, it, it really does need a retrofit. And I'm all for it, if we can find the money.
All right, before we go on to the next question, anyone else want to comment about the city hall? If not, we'll move on to the next question, which will go to Ms. Docry. Our question is, in seeking to replace city employees, what qualities in applicants do you feel most important? In seeking to replace city employees, what qualities in applicants do you feel most important?
I feel that they need to have some longevity. I know that a lot of times we kind of pass off the book on hiring younger age people. And sometimes we have to start somewhere. So sometimes we just have to go out there and give them a chance. And you never know. They might end up being one of those persons that'll be a 20-year, 10-year person employee. Expectations, I feel like if, when you're hiring or in the hiring process, everyone knows and understands their expectations, the production that they give you will be better. And it will probably help them in doing or, or performing their, their job that they're seeking. I know sometimes we kind of don't help along the way. Some of the employees that are already in place, they'll not help in get those, uh... They'll not help and get those, uh, newcomers out there to let them know, yes, you can do it. And they have to have goals. You have to have some goals as to where you want to be and where you want to end up at when you're out there seeking employment.
All right, anyone else want to comment? Mr. Taylor wants to comment, so y'all be good to pass the microphone here to Mr. Taylor. He will comment and then we'll go to our next question.
In my past life, there were four things I looked at, uh, when we were interviewing people. One, local. Try to hire the local people, they'll stay with you. You go out, way out far somewhere and find people, they'll come in for a while and then they're gonna leave you. Uh, secondly was ability to communicate. You gotta be able to communicate to each other, uh, both ways. And then the ability to learn. If you have the ability to learn, we can teach you whatever we need to teach you or you can teach us what we need to learn. Uh, and last, be a team player. Everybody's gotta be on the same team if you're gonna be successful. And so those were the four areas that I always looked at. It didn't matter what kind of computer technician we needed or, uh, instrument tech or mechanic or operator, didn't matter. If you had those four qualities, you could make it.
All right, anyone else want to comment before we go to our next question for Mr. LaTrel? The question is, what is your opinion of LaGrange not having a full-time engineer? What is your opinion of the city not having a full-time engineer?
Well, I, um, I think that for one, we need one. I mean, I don't know what else to say about that. We we should have a full-time engineer. There's things that are going on in the community and growth that, uh, that require an engineer to go out there and and inspect and and approve. And I don't really have a whole lot to say about it other than I'm for it.
All right, anyone else want to comment before we go to our next question for Ms. Marksdale? All right, the question is, what is your opinion of housing needs for the city? What is your opinion of housing needs for the city of LaGrange?
I, I think everyone knows here, LaGrange has a big housing issue. It's not only housing, we need jobs as well. We can't, if we don't have anyone anywhere to house, the people to live, no homes, apartments, anywhere, we can't even have employees work here. They have to go out of town for work. We need affordable housing. We need to get with our counterparts in the community and come up with solutions. How can we solve this issue? I don't think that one organization should be just the sole one to say, oh, we're gonna solve this problem, let's do it. I think the community's input is needed and I think that when we all get involved, we all can come up with a great solution for our community. I think, I think we need cities' input. Housing is a big issue, not only housing, but employment as well. But I think it starts with the community's input. If we all work together, we can solve this problem. And I know that we can work together because I've seen it firsthand.
All right, before we go to our next question, does anybody have one more comment on housing? Mr. Yoncha?
Yes, but what I've seen in the market today, uh, what is is keeping people from moving to LaGrange, Texas, if you're, if you're a middle class or even lower class, and trying to buy a home, property values are skyrocketing. Right now, they're just out of the world. Uh, as long as that stays in place, even your builders are gonna have a hard time coming in and and putting, uh, places for people to stay and try to make money on this.
I think Mr. LaTrel would like to comment on the housing.
We're knocking on doors. I've been talking to some people and hearing comments. When you have 27 and 28-year-old, um, young adults still living at home because they can't live out on their own, you have a problem. Um, so it's definitely an issue. Property values are skyrocketed. Uh, when we moved here just three years ago, um, our house, uh, has almost doubled in in value in those three years, which is great if I want to sell, but I can't sell because I can't go out and buy. And, um, and so that's a problem. Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to comment about housing before we move along to the next question, which is gonna be for Ms. DeKors? And the question is, in your opinion, does the city of LaGrange need a director of tourism? In your opinion, does the city of LaGrange need a director of tourism?
I know we have a tourism committee on the council. I'm not sure who it is because the reports given are always written. And I think that our tourism bureau is doing a pretty good job. I don't think we need a full-time person, but then again, I, uh, yes, I I think that the tourism, they're doing a good job now.
All right, anyone want to comment on the possibility of a tourism director? If not, we will go to the next question, which is for Mr. Yoncha. The question is, what do you consider the greatest current problem in LaGrange and what recommendations would you have to resolve it? What do you consider the greatest current problem in LaGrange and what recommend recommendations do you have to resolve that?
Uh, I actually have, uh, two things. Housing is number one, uh, and we we just discussed that. And, uh, not sure what we can do about the housing until until these prices are are leveled out or are, uh, down. And, um, number two, it goes back to the, to the question of, uh, if if we got a million bucks, what would you, what would I do with it? The, uh, our water pipes here in this town suck. There are, some of them have been in the, in the ground since 1930. We have a major problem. Uh, Sean can only budget so much money each year to replace these pipes. And and, uh, we we have a, we have a, we have a problem. Uh, I know that we started up on the north side and some on the south side with some of the sewer and water, water, but, uh, we have an infrastructure problem that's going on and it's not gonna do anything but get worse. Uh, uh, we're doing all we can on budget to replace it.
Okay, anyone want to comment on current problems in LaGrange and what recommendations do you have to resolve it before we go to our question? And it'll be the final question before we have closing statements. Our question, uh, for Mr. Taylor. Would you recommend the city of LaGrange help pay down the debt of St. Mark's Hospital? Would you recommend the city of LaGrange help pay down the debt of St. Mark's Hospital?
How come that's my question?
I'm just beating them as they come to me.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. Man, that's a loaded question. I've got a lot of concerns about the hospital 'cause, uh, uh, my age is getting to where I probably need it more than maybe somebody on the room. Uh, I don't want it to go away, but I also don't want additional tax. And so it's a, it's a, it's a loaded question and I don't have the answer. I I know what I'd like to say to y'all, but it's probably not politically correct and I won't. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, good luck to the hospital board and good luck to the hospital is all I can say.
Anyone want to comment? All right, we're gonna go along now to closing statements. And we'll give the, uh, microphone to Ms. Dockery for closing statements, which I believe are three minutes, uh, yes, three minutes for each closing statement. And here again, this is the way of them to wrap things up. So after Ms. Dockery gets through, we'll just move the microphone on down for closing statements. And again, Dr. Babri there has the card when 30 seconds are left. Three minutes.
I'd like to thank you for your time. I hope that if I am elected to serve, um, city council ward three, that I will be that person that will listen and voice your needs and concerns. I didn't prepare any closing remarks, so I'm ad libbing. I, um, heard lots of great questions and I know some of the answers that some of us newbies up here probably wasn't what you were used to hearing, but it was all new to us. It was real great. But, um, like I said in my newspaper article, I am willing to learn a lot about city government and I feel like I would be an asset to the city of LaGrange and the citizens. Thank you again.
I'd like to thank the Citizens Alliance for hosting tonight's event. I'd also like to thank each and every one of you that attended tonight and I hope I've answered everyone's questions. We may not agree 100% of the time, but if you are looking for someone with a strong will to better and preserve our community, not afraid to speak up and voice his opinion and doesn't accept, because we've always done it that way, as an answer, then I hope I can count on your vote. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for everyone for coming out and here and with us all. The reason that I would like to be your mayor, I see opportunities for our city to be open to citizens more flexible in supporting local businesses in LaGrange. I believe LaGrange can preserve its historical buildings and small-town friggin'ness while allowing growth and welcoming new businesses and residents into our community. I appreciate you all for coming out and thank you. And I hope you hope on May 4th, come on out.
As everyone else said, I thank y'all for coming. It's a pleasure to see people interested in what's going on in the city. And I would encourage people to come to city council meetings and see what's going on. As I've been knocking doors, I have found that many people are not familiar with what the city council does, who their city council representatives are, and they're just normal people. And I want to give these people a voice. I want, I want to know their needs and their concerns and they will, I would always be available to them by phone or by email. And I will, if I can't fix it, I will find out how. Thank you.
I want to start out by thanking Dan to take his time out of his busy day to come and moderate this, this meeting for us today. You did a great job, Dan.
You know, voting is one of our rights that we should never take for granted. It's in this spirit that I'm asking you, the voters of Ward Four, to vote and reelect me to represent you on the LaGrange City Council. If reelected, I pledge that I will keep and make the city of LaGrange the best it can be. I would appreciate your vote and support. Again, early voting will end on April 30th. May 4th is the election day, that's a Saturday. Voting is held at LaGrange City Hall, not at the courthouse, not at the courthouse. Voting is held at LaGrange City Hall and thank you for your support. Thank you for all you guys that have came out and listened to us this evening. Without you, we couldn't have done it.
Like everybody else said, thank you for coming out. Vote early, vote often. Vote for me. I'm the only one on the ballot in, in our ward, so again, I'll do the best I can for the next two years to, uh, to ask the hard questions and to see and make sure we're doing things right 'cause that's what's important is, is doing the right thing all the time, even when nobody's looking. So, uh, I hope we can continue to do that as, uh, LaGrange City Council and support our mayor, whoever that might be, and our, uh, and Sean doing his job. Sean has a very difficult job and I don't make it any easier for him, but I love him and, uh, he, he has been our best, uh, city manager for a long, long time. I want to keep it that way, but, uh, we want the city to be as best as it can be 'cause it's important to us as citizens and to the town itself. So thank you very much for your vote.
Before we have a final round of applause for these candidates up here tonight, I want to mention, I mentioned that Mr. Taylor was the only one up here without an opponent. And I was mentioning the, the ladies out in the audience who are also on the council and not up for reelection this year. I mentioned Patsy Zabronik. When I turned to Kathy, sitting next to Patsy is Kathy Walla, a longtime city employee. And I recognize Kathy Wyssu as Kathy Walla. So, boy, aren't you proud of me for just thinking? Nobody had to remind me about that. So it's Kathy Walla of the other city council. Kathy Wyssu. Kathy Wyssu. Kathy Walla, I haven't put you in that position yet. So how about a round of applause for these folks one more time?
I would, uh, just like to express my feelings as well as those here. You know, we've had a lot of questions that were asked of the candidates, uh, on-the-spot questions, some point-blank, some loaded questions. One thing or another, um, I tell you, I, for one, am, am proud of you folks that are here, that you're seeking, uh, to be a, a leader here in the city, uh, to be on the council, to be the mayor, whatever it might be. Proud of you guys that are in there for the job that you do on the council. There's one thing that I would really love to see that we do here in LaGrange and that is to have more of the open meetings. You know, because it's you folks who make these things possible and, you know, it's a shame that we can't let you speak here tonight. If we do, we go, we go to fisticuffs one way or other. But, uh, uh, thank you folks and, uh, on the city council, see what you can do about the open meetings as well. Thank you, folks. Thank you. That's it, let's bring out the drinks.